Good evening. I'd like to call to order the public hearing of the Board of Education for Homewood School District 153 for September 15th, 2025. A roll call, please.
Ms. Papelka. Ms. Baffet. Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Zenterman.
Here.
Ms. Scully.
Here.
Mr. Booth.
Here.
Mr. Bosch.
Here.
Five present.
Thank you. Ms. Papelka has a more commitment this evening and Mrs. Baffet will be here later on this evening. So with that, we're going to move on to the overview of the 2025-2026 budget.
Yes, Dr. Trinberger will be coming up, our business manager, to talk about the FY26 budget. Last month, we had the preliminary budget that we discussed, but here he will be presenting the final budget and then we will vote on it later this evening. Dr. Trinberger? Yeah, he can borrow one of these. The microphone over here.
So we spent a lot of time on the budget earlier and we had a committee at home where we talked about financial projections. Since that time, some, a few changes. We increased our revenues about $315,000. That was from $188,000 from EBF and we increased our Medicaid reimbursements to the timing of when the, where we received those from the state. So we made some adjustments on these expenditures. I reduced those about $30,000. So that gives us an operating deficit of $753,000 this year. And that's mainly due to abating $1,557,000 of property tax because we received a property tax relief grant in Illinois State for last year of about 1.45 million. We did also make about $1.5 million in budget cuts this year because our projections show that we need to be careful with our spending as we go forward. I'll entertain any questions at this time.
Anyone have any questions on the board? Anyone in the audience? Thank you very much, Dr. Trinberger. With that, we have a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So with that, we are going to move on to the second of this, agendas. Here we go. All right. I'd like to call to order the regular board meeting of the Board of Education of Homewood School District 153 for September 15th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Ms. Baffet. Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Zenterman.
Here.
Ms. Scully.
Here.
Mr. Booth.
Here.
Ms. Papelka. Mr. Bosch.
Here.
Five present.
Thank you. Next item, approval of the minutes from the regular board meeting of August 11th, 2025. Are there any additions or edits to the agenda? I'm sorry, to the meeting minutes from August 11th? All right, if not, we have a motion.
So move.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on, future dates. Yes.
The district will be closed on Yom Kippur, which is Thursday, October 2nd. And then also, we have an extended fall break for all of our students on Friday, October 3rd. So that will be a four-day weekend for students. And then we will recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day on Monday, October 13th. So those are the big dates coming up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next thing on the agenda is a presentation from School Exec Connect. They're the firm that the board is working with to identify Scott's successor. And so with that, I have representatives from School Exec Connect come up and provide us with an update on a new superintendent profile based upon a variety of focus groups and community forums that we've had the first half of September. And I think there was one, maybe two in August as well, so.
I'm breaking the rules already.
Thank you very much. Is that better?
Yep.
Thanks again. My name's Kevin Almira. I am president and owner of School Exec Connect. The board has contracted with us. My partner on this search is Dr. Brian Barnhart, former superintendent from La Grange Township. I was a former superintendent myself for nine years at Argo Community High School. We had great conversations, as Alex described, with several focus groups, targeted focus groups, stakeholder groups, two open forums for whomever wanted to come, staff, teachers, admin, whatever was one. And then the second one was, was an early evening session for community members, parents, anyone who wanted to come to that was certainly welcome to come. We've gained a lot of good input, confidential input. We told people when they came in the room, we shut the door, whatever is said here stays here. But we wanted to capture the themes that you and the students and the teachers and staff, anybody connected with the district was looking for in your next superintendent. And that person's going to have big shoes to fill. At the end of tonight's presentation, I've got a whole double pack of information for the board. Lot of data that you're going to have in front of you. Don't feel like you need to read it tonight or tomorrow, whatever, but it's, it's good information as you start to think about what are our goals for next year? What are some perceptions of the public and the teachers and the admin and the parents of how we do business here at 153? If you want to take this information and help craft a one- or two-day summertime outing with the superintendent to create, create the goals and topics for priorities for next year, this is a good starting point. So you're going to have a lot of data to review over the next few weeks. But I'm going to give you an overview on our presentation this evening. At the end, I'll share the profile that we developed. So just as an introduction, we had some focus groups, as I described, open forums and online surveys were conducted together inside some students, staff and community members. Forty-one people participated in the focus groups and open forums. One hundred sixty-two responded to the survey. These data were used to create a profile for our recruitment efforts and for the board to use as they select their next superintendent. Some strengths that emerged, again, based on our conversations in the open forums and in the, in the survey responses and the focus groups were that the district is defined by a strong supportive culture where the Board of Education, the admin, staff and community work collaboratively and positively together. That is not always the case in school districts, but you've got a great thing going here. You've got the right climate and culture for someone to walk in and do good by kids. Families and community members take great pride in their schools, showing commitment through successful referenda, several over the last decade, active participation in events and generous support for programs like STEM. This area of the South suburbs is very diverse, welcoming and inclusive. It's a family-oriented environment that values empathy, balance and unity across all backgrounds. Staff retention is high. Traditions are celebrated and the culture is authentic and deeply rooted in the history of excellence and community pride in the district. And this is a close-knit, passionate community with high expectations for its schools and the school leaders, always keeping student success at the center of all decision-making. You've got the right thing going on there. Some challenges that emerged through our conversations and the survey data. The district faces serious financial challenges, including a $1.5 billion in recent budget cuts that was just, just discussed, facility needs, enrollment, some enrollment decline, a limited tax base and some perceptions of past fiscal mismanagement. Past fiscal mismanagement. Staff morale is strained due to contract stresses, past pay freezes, hiring struggles and tensions sometimes between leadership and staff, compounded by a history of perceived nepotism and ineffective fiscal management. Again, I'm not saying that's happening right here, right now, but there is a, that came out through our discussions. Student needs are growing and complex with high percentages of IEP students. My numbers indicate that it's almost twice the state average. Unmet staffing positions, growing ESL and ELL populations and challenges in inclusion and subgroup performance. Community and cultural dynamics include generational divides, some resistance to change because they value tradition so much, overreliance on tradition and limited acceptance of greater inclusion through, though people describe the district as caring and close-knit. Safety, communication and long-range planning are pressing concerns with parents calling for stronger emergency preparedness, better integration of technology, more transparency about challenges, especially fiscal, especially fiscal challenges and clear facility improvement The priorities that were described for the first year for this person, whomever walks through the door, is that they need immediately to start building relationships. That's the top priority, including with staff, parents, students, administrators, community leaders and especially the Board of Education, while also developing trust, authenticity and a clear vision for the direction of the district. The new leader must address pressing fiscal concerns, upcoming contract negotiations, some staff turnover and to ensure competitive salaries to stabilize the district. Special education leadership is seen as, as needing review, creating staffing service, morale and communication challenges that demand immediate attention. Strong communication system need to be in place, including clarity on whom to contact and a proactive plan for engaging families, especially new families, that are needed to bridge gaps with parents and the wider community. Curriculum rigor, data-driven improvement, DEI commitment and accountability for all adults should be central focuses alongside strengthening collaboration with the board and the union. Some characteristics that emerge as valued for the new person. He or she must be a visionary leader who can implement innovative solutions, demonstrate creativity with resources, especially limited resources, and balance fragility with the ability to address fiscal challenges and aging facilities. Stakeholders emphasize the importance of visibility, approachability and interpersonal skills. This is the leader who walks the walk. He or she is amongst the people. Maintains an open-door policy, is personal, empathetic and present in classrooms and the community. The leader should be a strong communicator and collaborator, transparent with staff, parents and the entire community, while also fostering positive relationships with village, park district and regional leaders. The desired qualities include instructional leadership and data-informed decision-making with a background in teaching, successful building level experience and knowledge of best practices, curriculum, assessment and professional development for staff. Parents and staff stress the need for a community-focused leader, one who understands the changing needs of today's students, values diversity and cultural sensitivity, supports families as partners in education and strengthens, strengthens connections across the broader Some survey highlights. The demographics of the respondents identified 57% as parents and 31% as staff. Obviously, these are not going to total to 100. Many people checked several boxes. Top strengths that emerged as survey highlights here, 70% of respondents said the quality of teaching staff is number one and that there's a positive learning environment throughout the district. That was number two. Some improvements that are needed. The number one that was checked was parent commitment that fosters student learning and tailoring instruction to individual student needs. And here's the profile. This is proprietary. This is what we developed based on all the data that we, that we received. Number one, the next superintendent will inherit a highly supportive, family-oriented community that values diversity, strong traditions and close relationships with, between schools, staff and families. They will be drawn to a district with a history of excellence and successful referenda where pride, inclusivity and a kind, student-centered culture are deeply embedded. The leader must be a visible, approachable and rational communicator, skilled at building trust with staff, families, the Board of Education and community partners. They must bring strong financial acumen and creativity with limited resources as the district faces significant fiscal challenges, facility needs and a constrained tax base. A commitment to equity, inclusion and cultural responsiveness is essential as the district serves a diverse student body with increasing needs across race, SES, ESL and special education. The new superintendent should provide instructional leadership rooted in data, best practices and accountability, while ensuring that students' wellbeing and growth remain at the center of all decisions. Early priorities will include addressing special education issues and responsiveness, strengthening staff morale and clarifying systems of communication for parents and staff. The leader will need to balance honoring beloved traditions with guiding innovation and change, particularly around technology, student safety and long-range planning. The district will seek a visionary, forward-thinking superintendent who can inspire excellence, rock the boat when needed and elevate the district from good to great. Above all, the successful candidate will be a long-term, student-focused community leader who listens, collaborates and ensures that every child feels seen, supported and is able to thrive. So our conclusion is that the report gives recruitment screening and candidate selection input. Hopefully, it offers insight to the board especially about community perspectives on the district and superintendent expectations. And again, as, as I spoke at the earlier part, we recommend that you use these data to understand key issues and opportunities. Thank you very much. I will give this microphone back to somebody.
Want to start? Questions, comments?
Well, I appreciate it. I think the key thing is that it's a lot to digest and we'll do that. Just for my own, I can only speak for myself personally, there was no aha moment, which is good. And that just speaks to self-awareness. Doesn't mean it's a solution to self-awareness. It's basically knowing this one tells you something, something you've been working on if you've heard before. Yeah, I don't want to start probing in regards to this come up or the that come up because I can, you know, take a look at that. But a common theme was, from my vantage point, was the importance of culture, empathy. Inclusiveness was a big theme. But I do, I quickly, because of my background, went to, okay, what is the spec? What would an aspirant look at? And I love the fact we have to rock the boat when necessary, not just because.
Right.
Like Ron, I think there's nothing here that was unexpected and I think that, I think your overview provided a really good summary of, of things that I expect the superintendent is capable of doing and what his or her responsibilities and the expectations will be of, of the next superintendent. I think it'll be interesting to definitely go further into the additional data you provided to take a look at a little, some more specifics and stuff like that. But again, I don't, there wasn't anything here that was unexpected or that I was, yeah. Yeah. And I would agree with everything that's in here that those are, what's been, what appeared up here, which presented, those would be my expectations as well for the next, for the next person, so. Yep. Anybody else on the board?
I just had one thing that was surprising and it was little mention of archetype. You know, what are the things that we would look for in a leader? It was more about, here are the problems or here are the issues, common themes there and hopefully this person is aware of these things. Because typically, when you bring in a new leader, everyone is looking at that person expecting, they speak well, you know, there's eye contact, they show empathy. Just curious if some of those characteristics came out as well, just on top. Yeah. And, and you know, I was just curious, just from leadership style, those types of things. And so I'll look deeper in there. But those are the types of things that we'll pull out in interviews. I guess blindly, I thought that maybe some of that will come out, you know.
Or comments from the audience? Okay. Okay. Thank you very much, Kevin. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's good.
All right. With that, let's move on to audience participation. This is limited to items that are not on tonight's agenda. I'm here to address the board. All right. With that, we'll move on to board response. This is response to any questions or concerns, concerns raised by the audience at previous meetings. Report of board committees and meetings is left on the agenda. Any reports?
I will say our personnel met and I can also speak on behalf of Ed's progress. Basically, personnel issues have been coming up, if not on tonight's agenda in the future of events. One of the things that Dr. McAllister did, first commitment from several years ago, continues to watch our staffing numbers in terms of staff that are coming on board and staff that are leaving and then the demographic, right? Years of, years of experience, race, gender, schools that they're in, right? Where we're leaving, it's just tracking all that data, trying to keep an eye on for patterns. One of the commitments of Dr. McAllister and our board has had for quite a while is only here for my staff and our community is the need for diversity and equity amongst our staff. And that's one of the data points that, that Dr. McAllister works on yearly, looking at that and was our main focus and a major focus.
Thank you. Anything else?
Somewhat of an F and P meeting, which is on the agenda later in regards to the assessment of all of our facilities, our financial situation. We had our partner from Raymond James that was in the meeting to talk about the status of our bonds, the lifespan of those, our opportunities to leverage financing as we've done in the past without impacting our residents. So more will be shared on that later on the agenda, but it was a very insightful meeting. And again, this goes to the job of the new superintendent that comes in and has some savviness around stretching a penny into a dime. I wouldn't say a dollar, we can't get past that. So it was a great meeting in light, I guess, in lieu of our F and P meeting and it's more to come on the agenda on that.
Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Yes. First of all, Churchill, Ms. Peacock. Yes. Outstanding open house last week. It was very well attended. There were over 500 people. I was there and it was just wall-to-wall smiles, energy, enthusiasm. So that was really, really great to see. So thank you to you and your staff. And then this week, Ms. Jones, the Willow Open House is coming up on Thursday. So we're equally excited about that. And also, if you recall, Shelley Marks, our recently departed board president. We, when she retired, we named the Willow Playground in her honor. And so as part of the Willow Open House, we're going to actually unveil, officially unveil the plaque in her recognition. So that'll take place at 6 o'clock. The open house starts at 5:30. We're actually incorporating it as part of the scavenger hunt that kids will be doing to kind of get them out to that playground area. But if anybody would like to come recognize Shelley, she will be in attendance 6:00 PM this Thursday. And then also, I wanted to spend a few moments here to talk about the school calendar. We had an institute day this past Wednesday. Great, great work. Thank you to Morgan Consul and Catherine Zarnike in curriculum and assessment for designing a day just full of staff training. And I attended two of those sessions myself and they were outstanding. It was nice to see our staff members be able to devote a full day to accomplishing what they need. And one of the things that comes up repeatedly is the need for our staff to have time to meet together. And so I know there's questions as to why we, we pick days on Wednesdays versus Fridays. You know, what's the logic for that? And the logic is really simple. We have done Fridays before. When we have Friday institute days or early release days, and we do have some coming this year, but not all of them. But when we've done that, our staff attendance is not as good as it is during the middle of the week, nor is our student attendance as good as it is when we do it in the middle of the week. So if the goal is for our staff to grow, if the goal is for students to be in school, quite simply, we have better success when we hold our institute days and our early release days in the middle of the week. I know it's not as convenient as doing it on a Friday, but that is the reason. I will be sending home an email later this week that actually details the process we used. It's, it's quite extensive. But it was also brought to my attention, a comment that was made that quite frankly, I took offense to. And it's not often that I respond publicly to something on social media, but I felt the need to do so tonight. With regard to the calendar, last week, someone posted on social media asking how the childless superintendent could be allowed to create a calendar by putting institute days on random Wednesdays instead of being, quote, "civil" and doing it on Fridays. I can accept criticism and I encourage people who have questions to call or come in and meet with me face-to-face and I am happy to explain our process, rationale and the pros and cons of not only the calendar creation process, but any of the decisions that I make. I realize not everyone will like my decisions, but please understand, the calendar was not created without considerable thought and discussion by numerous people. The details of how the calendar was created will be explained in detail in the email that will go out. That said, I feel it is quite unfortunate that some adults feel the need to express their disagreement through social media rather than going directly to the source and inquiring as to why we do the things that we do. We ask our children to think twice before posting mean and/or hateful things on social media, yet many adults fail to practice what they preach. Rather than complain through a social media platform that has been specifically designed to be hurtful and antagonizing, why not seek to understand and possibly provide positive solutions? Regarding me not having children, my wife and I have lived in this community for 15 years and I have worked in this community for 24 years and in the field of education for 34 years. for 34 years. During that time, I have interacted with, and hopefully positively influenced, literally thousands of kids. To imply that the decision to place an institute day in the middle of the week was made because I, as someone who does not have children of my own, could not possibly understand nor care about those who do is ignorance, uninformed, and completely without merit. Criticize the decisions I make all you want, but do not question the personal decisions that my wife and I have made. As a public servant, I understand criticism comes with this job, but this crossed the line of decency, and my wife definitely deserves better. This experience is certainly not isolated to me. When we wonder why there's an educator shortage, we need to consider the manner in which the public is interacting with those who work in our schools. Whether it is a teacher, a social worker, a school secretary, or a principal, if we do not do better with how we treat those in this profession, we risk losing committed and caring people doing this incredibly important and rewarding work. It is time for all adults to model the behavior we seek in our children. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. McAllister. I do want to support Dr. McAllister in everything he said, and I completely agree with everything he said. The, I mean, we're talking obviously specifically about the school calendar process. The school calendar process is something that not, is not just Dr. McAllister's decision. It is the decision of many administrators, many teachers are involved, administrators involved. We talk about it as a board during several meetings. We take a look at it, a preliminary calendar, a final calendar. So by no means is this Dr. McAllister's calendar. This is the district's calendar, this is the board's calendar, this is Willow's calendar, Churchill's calendar, and James Hart's calendar. So fully support Dr. McAllister in this, and I agree that what was stated on Facebook was inappropriate and was very disappointing by a member of our community and the folks who chose to reply to it as well. If anyone else has any comments or thoughts or...
I can't agree more loudly than saying Dr. McAllister's great points that were made in there, and Alex takes a quote of that, and I also, as a board member, support that 110%.
Thank you.
When I saw the post, I just thought it had totally crossed the line. And I just hope people understand, you know, just my isolated experience now, a year on the board and just seeing all the educators around me and all these different people is that everybody's just trying to do the best with what they have, and there's no perfect solution. I sat on the calendar committee meetings and was ready to voice my opinion about the Wednesdays.
You were ready and you did.
And I did it, and everybody heard me out and convinced me why it was the decision. And so I then, you know, a couple of weeks later, came here and voted for those Wednesdays because I understood that it was not ideal and that it was the best solution. And so just across the board, that every decision isn't going to be a decision we like to have to make, but we're just trying to make the best decisions with what we have in front of us. And I think that goes for teachers, you know, administrators, everybody. Everybody's just trying to do the best they can, and sometimes we're not able to do what we can't do. There's no perfect solution to any of these problems.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. That was a fabulous response.
Thank you.
I would like the opportunity to leverage your sincere writing. When I have faced with anything on Facebook or anything like that, I reserve rights to pull you in. No, seriously, I want this same energy when it's time for votes to help us figure out how we can make our schools better, how we can get more tax funding support, more after-school support. We need that same energy, and you know, I appreciate you putting out there the need for positive discourse, and you know, I agree with everything you said as well, and fully support it seriously.
Thank you.
At this point, I don't want to be the only one that doesn't say, "Good job, Dr. McAllister." That's why I did that.
I'm down here too.
No, I think that, I wish that there was just more room for natural inquisition before judgment is made, before statements are made that criticize. I just wish we would ask questions and see them understand it before we do darts or stones at people. I agree.
I agree. I'll just, you know, just reiterate, I support Scott, and I think it's very important that everyone realizes that that is not a decision that Scott makes alone. I think that was a huge point to make. This is a collaborative effort, you know? There are a lot of people involved in that calendar. It is not just Dr. McAllister, you know, doing that. So, well said, and have our full support.
Thank you. All right. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda items. First one is authorize the chief school business official to pay the usual and customary bills for October 2025. Questions or comments? All right. Next item, 7B, recognition of the sixth-day enrollment numbers.
Yes, each year, we count our enrollment on the sixth day specifically because that gives us time to realize that some of the kids that we rolled over from last year's enrollment will likely not be showing up at all. And so we remove them from the rolls and come up with what we call a sixth-day enrollment. This year, that number was 1,826 students. It has since risen. I mean, all the principals are back there saying it's bigger than 1,826. It's probably gone up 20 since that time. So we're closer now to 1,850. And as I, you know, if past trends hold true, we will likely end up closer to 1,875 by winter break, which is right in line with where we were last year.
Thank you. Approval of the administrator and teacher compensation report.
One of the state laws requires that we post administrator and teacher compensation reports on our website. Every district does this, albeit in different ways. Some of them are easier to find than others. And if you'd like a scavenger hunt online, just pull up random districts and see if you can find their compensation report. It's not as easy as it sounds sometimes. But yeah, this is the approval of the report from last year, which we will post after the board votes on it.
Thank you. Approval of tuition and salary adjustments.
Yes, each year, we track, Mary Kay Dunn specifically tracks the people who have moved over on the salary schedule because of increased education, and then also the tuition reimbursement that the district provides through the collective bargaining agreement. So you have two documents there that show the number of people, the names, education levels, et cetera.
Should have asked if there were board questions for anything related to ABC and then now D2. Questions or comments? Sorry about that. Moving on to E, approval of lease agreement with Speed for the 2025-2026 school year.
Yeah, this dates back several years now, at least five, if my memory serves me, where Speed District 802 has leased a satellite classroom for their students in the James Hart building. They have been wonderful, I say tenants, but quite honestly, their kids integrate into some of our classes. It's been seamless. It's been a wonderful arrangement for both parties. So we're going to renew that again for this year.
Any questions or comments? From the board, from the audience? Personnel reports?
Yes, you can see a variety of personnel items here. I would like to point out specifically approval of stipends. We have James Koshmider, who is serving kind of a dual capacity, he's helping out Kevin Keen in his area by being our district driver, but also a maintenance apprentice, if you will. Kevin is retiring in two years, 27. And then Paul, Paul, his assistant, is retiring two years after that. And, you know, we talked briefly about the facilities earlier. We'll mention that when we get to the life safety item on the action item, but our facilities are aging, and the worst-case scenario for our district would be to have the two people who are infinitely knowledgeable about our facilities both retire at the same time. So we were able to convince Paul Clemcheck to stick around beyond Kevin's retirement, but we also have this idea of trying to train somebody, not saying that that's James' position, but certainly trying to train somebody who has the skills to be able to possibly take over one day. Those are huge shoes to fill. So that's what that stipend is related to. Also, we have reorganized the business office, and we've met in committee with personnel and F and P. We've reorganized the business office, reduced a position there, but those duties still need to be done. So we have a list of stipends for the people who are currently in the office assuming additional responsibilities. We're still yielding a savings of about $35,000 through that reduction. And yeah, and then one independent contractor agreement. But several items on personnel.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions from the board, from the audience? All right. If not, we need approval of the consent agenda items.
Motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented in items 7A, 7B, 7C, 7D, 7E, and 7I.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Zenterman?
Yes.
Ms. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Baffet?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Six eyes.
Motion carries. Moving along to the action agenda items. First one this evening is the second payment of August 2025 bills and first payment of September 2025 bills. Any questions, comments, or did your questions answered? Anything from the audience? All right. If not, motion please.
Move upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education authorize the second payment of August 2025 bills and the first payment of September 2025 bills in an amount not to exceed $2,172,527.09.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Baffet?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zenterman?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Six eyes.
Motion carries. Next item is the approval of the life safety amendments, which we learned from earlier. Oh, wait. Oops, I'm sorry. My fault. Adapt from the FY26 budget. Sorry, Eric. Wanted to skirt over that. I don't have anything additional, and the budget we covered is in the public hearing. All right. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Thank you, Dr. Trinberger. Appreciate it. With that, now do we have a motion for adoption of FY26 budget?
Move upon the recommendation of the Finance and Property Committee and the Chief School Business Official that the Board of Education approve the budget for the 2025-2026 school year as presented. I laugh. Do you have anything else to add? Or modify if budget line items are changed at the public hearing or the regular meeting, and adopt a resolution declaring the budget for the 2025-2026 fiscal year as attached.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Baffet?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zenterman?
Yes.
Ms. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Six eyes.
Motion carries. Now, approval of life safety amendments.
Yes, so we had Committee of the whole, and we had a presentation from Studio GC where they identified approximately $31 million in life safety amendments, work that needs to be completed. So this evening, we are asking the board to approve a life safety amendment for James Hart. This amendment is to cover roofing work for about $6.5 million and about $1.5 million in heating and air conditioning work. And then the amount includes architect fees of 7.5% and a contingency of 10%. And the total for James Hart is $9,453,289.78.
Did you want to talk about the Willow items also?
We're asking for a second approval of a life safety amendment for Willow School, and this is to replace five classroom unit ventilators that were omitted as part of the construction a few years ago at a cost of $150,000, and with architects' fees and contingency, a total of $176,250. And this work would take place during the summer of 2026 for both buildings.
Questions from the board? Any comments?
I just want to clarify, because I know we're more closely aligned to this and understand it. Simply put, life safety amendment, what is that?
So life safety is a criteria developed by the Illinois State Board of Education. They have three categories. There is a category A of items that are immediate concern for safety for students or staff, and those need to be completed within one year. A category B are items that are important but of lesser urgency that need to be completed within five years. And then there's a category C item of maintenance items. So we'll have a little over $1 million in category A, about $14 million in category B, and about $15 million in category C items. And the budget did include selling bonds to pay for this work. We'll be selling life safety bonds in two installments in late 2025 and sometime in calendar year 2026. And we'll be able to do this work, we'll be able to structure these bonds so there won't be any additional cost to our taxpayers on debt portions of their property tax bills.
I'm sorry I didn't catch that part, so one more time, please.
I said, we will be restructuring these life safety bonds so there'll be no additional cost to the taxpayers on the debt portion of their tax bills.
And did Dr. McAllister participate in these meetings?
Yes, he did.
Thank you. No further questions.
Yeah, it's a little bit of both. They forgot it, it wasn't included, but honestly, it should have been, is the best answer. So we're going to make sure that we rectify that by including it with this round. Yeah.
The one thing, one comment I would make is, you know, Studio, like Dr. Trinberger mentioned, Studio GC is our new architecture firm. I think we've been working with them for about two years now, about two years?
Yes.
And so they came through and they did a review of all of our buildings, all of our facilities, and the result is a life safety survey. And so I think, you know, timing-wise, from the standpoint of what School Exec Connect said, or commented about, you know, addressing our facilities, our aging facilities, and so a lot of the things that Studio GC identified that needed, that are either category A or category B, are items that need to be addressed within five years, if I remember correctly. So we do have a plan that we're working on, along with Studio GC and with our financial advisor, to try and figure out a way, or have, we have come up with a way, now tried to, have come up with a way to address a lot of our urgent facility issues that are pressing and that, you know, are in need of being done. So I think, so the reason I say that is I think we are in the process of setting up a lot of projects for the next superintendent, so hopefully they will be able to, I mean, they'll still need to be focused on facilities, but it won't be a sole focus for him or her. This will be hopefully something that will be well underway, that they just need to oversee and be aware that it's going on, and they'll be, the superintendent will be able to focus on some of the other things that the community has expressed interest in, in terms of, you know, from the focus group and the surveys and stuff like that. So everything that we just talked about, we're addressing some of our urgent facility needs, and hopefully we'll be setting up our facilities for another 20-plus years by making some of these much-needed improvements, just like we did in the Willow roof and the Churchill roof. Those were all, I mean, they're not pretty or noticeable projects, but they're all things that need to be done so we can make sure that when the time comes, we can work on focusing on some of the stuff on the insides. Yeah. So, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. No, yeah, I agree. I acknowledge what you're saying and everything you said. I was just providing a little more clarity, a little more information about what we're talking about, so. Yep. 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 You're welcome.
Anyone else have any comments or thoughts?
I'd just say, I do think that the new Churchill roof looks fabulous. When I walk up, I'm, I notice it, waiting for Willow to get totally finished. But I ride by every once in a while and say, "I think it looks great." So I know it might not be the first thing, but I know it's pretty good. Hopefully, we'll get some insights to match it one of these days.
Yes. Right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board or the audience? If not, do we have a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education approve the life safety amendments for James Hart School in the amount of $9,453,298.78 and Willow School in the amount of $176,250 as attached.
Second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Baffet?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zenterman?
Yes.
Ms. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Six eyes.
Motion carries. The next item is the approval of MOU regarding retirement date change.
Yes, school psychologist Sharon Perry, Dr. Perry at James Hart School, is revising her retirement date, pushing that back one year. So instead of retiring this school year, she will be retiring in June of '27. The details of that MOU, which, again, memorandum of understanding with the HEA, our union, we talked to the leaders and came to this agreement. So we're asking for your approval to push her retirement date back one year.
Any questions or comments from the board? From the audience? All right. Do we have a motion, please?
Moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the memo of understanding between the HEA on and the Board of Education regarding the date change for Sharon Perry's retirement.
Second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Baffet?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zenterman?
Definitely.
Ms. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
And Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Six eyes.
Motion carries. Next, approval of MOU regarding stipend for social workers.
Yeah, actually, last month, the board voted to approve the stipend of $3,000. This is merely an MOU that formalizes the language. This is for our social workers, assuming section 504 responsibilities. Again, as a cost savings measure, when Cece Baloo left our district at the end of the school year, we did not replace her position, but nonetheless, she did a lot. And so one of the huge responsibilities she had was managing 504s for the district. So the social workers will assume that it is increased time and effort that will happen outside the school day. So this is an MOU to that effect.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? From the audience? Or if not, do we have a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the memo of understanding between the HEA and the Board of Education regarding a $3,000 stipend for each social worker for their duties as 504 case manager.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zenterman?
Yes.
Ms. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Baffet?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Six eyes.
Motion carries. Next item is employment.
Yes, we're excited to welcome the following individuals to District 153. Sydney Cole, Assistant at Churchill; Teresa Johnson, Assistant Cook at Willow; Leslie Cecil, Supervisor at Churchill; Nina Diaz, Evening Custodian at James Hart; Michaela Henning, Dishwasher and Server at James Hart; Shane Weishaar, Evening Custodian at James Hart; and Michael Callaway, ISS Assistant at James Hart.
Any questions or comments from the board? From the audience? If not, do we have a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education approve the employment of Sydney Cole, Teresa Johnson, and Leslie Cecil, effective August 30, 2025; Nina Diaz, effective September 2, 2025; Michaela Henning, effective September 3, 2025; Shane Weishaar, effective September 8, 2025; and Michael Callaway, effective September 16, 2025, upon the terms recommended by the superintendent, conditioned only upon receipt of a satisfactory criminal background report, and upon receipt no later than September 30, 2025, of evidence of proper legal qualifications for the position to be filled.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Zenterman?
Yes.
Ms. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Baffet?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
And Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Six eyes.
Motion carries. Next item, discussion items. Are there any discussion items from the board? All right. Next item, written communication to the Board of Education.
Not at this time.
Thank you. With that said, next item is adjournments.
So moved?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.